Okay. It's 10 o'clock, so if everyone could take a seat and wrap up your conversations, we'll get started.
And he didn't even have to hit it with a hammer.
Okay. Good morning. It's Monday, July 31st, wow, time flies, 2023, 10:00 AM, and this is our city council work session. These work sessions are an opportunity for council and staff to talk about items that will be appearing on upcoming agendas usually. In some more depth, it's usually when we flesh out the direction council wants to go on items. There is no public comment during these meetings as there is no vote taking place on any of these items. It's merely for councils' education and their opportunity to ask questions and get more information before the item comes forward on a regular city council meeting agenda. So with that, we're going to jump right in. The first item is the Sunshine Peak Apartments Community Development Block Grant Application. And I think council has seen these before, but I believe this is the first time that our DART and grant coordinator, Michelle Wingfield and community development specialist, Chris Hottinger, I believe, this might be the first time they've presented one. So how about it, guys?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah?
Hey, this is David. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you kind of sound like God coming through the ceiling, but okay. Hi, David.
I kind of feel like it, but I, on this particular issue, and I have discussed it with the city attorney, although I do not believe it is a true conflict, I represented the developer 20 years ago whenever this project was built and participated in the construction, excuse me, of this project. So I think out of an abundance of caution and to avoid any semblance of a potential conflict, I'm going to withhold from discussing this topic today.
Okay, great. And we can't see you anyway, so I don't think council will be... Oh, there you are.
I can see me.
Great, now we can see you. Now, now we can see you. You know, if you just turn off your camera so that we aren't influenced by any, you know, anything you might be shaking your head to, nodding your head to, that kind of thing, perfect. That would be the best way to stay out of the discussions on this item. But you can still hear us and then you'll know when we're finished talking about it. I don't know. Okay. So go ahead and tell us about this community development block grant.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. City Council staff is seeking approval from the city council to apply... Or, City of Montrose staff is seeking approval from city council to apply for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, on behalf of Montrose County Housing Authority. The purpose of this grant is to secure funding to acquire the Sunshine Peak Apartments located at 748 Cedar Creek Avenue. Those are the apartments out on the bypass, if you're not familiar. They currently provide essential low-income housing for our community. The acquisition would prevent the loss of this property as an affordable housing asset. The City of Montrose aims to secure the CDBG grant to sub-grant funding to the Montrose County Housing Authority for the, for the acquisition. The request is $2,600,000 in grant funds to acquire Phase One of the Sunshine Peak Apartments, which includes 49 residential units. The CDBG program administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development provides funding to local governments to address a wide range of community development needs, and that includes affordable housing initiatives. By leveraging this grant opportunity, the City of Montrose can support the housing authority efforts to preserve and expand affordable housing options in our community. By acquiring this property, the housing authority will be able to exercise greater control over quality of the units and ensure long-term affordability. The total project costs are estimated to be $3,850,000, inclusive of acquisition costs, soft costs, and critical repairs. The Montrose County Housing Authority is seeking CDBG grant in amount of $2,600,000, which would cover just the acquisition. So the funding from this grant would not be covering things like repairs. And the remaining cost of the project would be covered by the Montrose County Housing Authority through debt servicing. There are no matching funds required for this grant. So we would recommend approval by city council to authorize submission of the Community Development Block Grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development on behalf of Montrose County Housing Authority. The request of $2,600,000 will be utilized to acquire the Sunshine Peak Apartments and ensure long-term available, affordable housing availability. We also have Susan Barrientos here with the Housing Authority to help answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a question. I was under the impression the Housing Authority already owned it, but maybe they're just running it. Maybe that's the difference, and I don't know if you're the right person or if Susan wants to come forward and answer that, that relationship. Good morning. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for considering this. So we are a special limited partner at this point, which means we own 1% of 1%, and it is managed by actually a property management company.
Okay.
So it is just time for us to take over the ownership.
So you really don't have a lot of influence over maintenance or reconstruction or updating of units?
Correct.
But by purchasing it, you're going to be able to ensure that the livability of the units are much better quality?
That is correct.
That's fantastic. Okay, good. Thanks for clarifying that.
Sure.
Susan, start.
For public...
Make sure you're talking through the mic.
Okay, just for public information, where's the Sunshine Peaks apartment located?
On Cedar Creek Avenue, off the bypass.
Okay, thank you.
It's right by the, it's near the county events center there. And Susan, would you mind, because you do a really good job summarizing it, but giving the quick summary of who owns it now and why it's time for the Montrose County Housing Authority to contemplate this purchase? It's complicated. I think Susan does a good job, but I think you might be interested to know, and the community might be interested to know, why now?
Yeah, it's a very complicated process, but yes. So the three partners in the organization, the large partner is Boston Financial, who 15 years ago purchased the tax credits to, to fund most of the project. The other partner is actually the developer, the original developer, Luckin Bill Drayton. And so at the end of 15 years, the tax credits have been used by Boston Financial. And so then they call it a winding down period, and that's the period that we're in now. And so the developer wants to step out at this point, and Boston Financial has gotten their tax credits, and so they're ready to step out. And so at that point, then, the Housing Authority steps up to purchase the entire Phase One project.
Are there any other projects that the Housing Authority owns?
We're a special limited partnership again in Sunshine Peaks Phase Two, and so we will be going through this winding down process. It was built two years after Phase One. And so we'll be going through this process again over the next couple of years to take over that. We are a special limited partnership with Woodgate Trails, the elderly complex, which is by the new, the South City Market. It's not so new anymore, but the South City Market. We are also a special limited partner for Real America, who is building the 60 new units adjacent to or very close to the rec department.
And then there's Barbara Court and other properties that the Housing Authority owns already and oversees. So they, in my opinion, do a great job of that oversight. And Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, if I say it incorrectly, but the Housing Authority really is in a position to purchase Sunshine Peaks. And we feel that it's a good option for our community instead of another developer coming in and purchasing it. So as Michelle did a really good job mentioning and summarizing how Susan's explained it to the Housing Authority Board, we don't have to, but it does have some significant pros for our community to do it. And I don't know, Susan, if you want to speak anymore to that. She's been working on this for a long time, since before I got on the board in 2020.
Yeah, so, you know, we just feel like we could take control of Phase One and, you know, work on... We didn't want to apply for rehab funds. That adds a whole lot of other layers of, of oversight that would have to be done both by the city and by us. It also triggers Davis Bacon wages. So it becomes far more costly. So we just opted to, after talking to our representatives at DOLA, we opted to go for the acquisition costs. And then we, you know, would hope to rehab or remodel each individual unit as it turns over or becomes vacant.
Does that limited ownership piece, is that basically giving the Housing Authority, maybe, I'm not using the right word, but like the first right of refusal to purchase it? What's the point of owning 1% of 1%? Is it to have that, the skin in the game so that you're positioned to buy it when the tax credits expire?
Some of the operating agreements, this one was very much geared toward us taking over. Woodgate Trails doesn't even mention that we have right of first refusal. The reason the tax credit people seek us to be a special limited partnership is that it gives them tax-exempt status, both for sales and use tax as well as property tax, which is the big savings for them.
Sure, sure, okay.
So another question is, if the Housing Authority did not purchase the Sunshine Peak Apartments, Phase One, and another contract or another developer purchased it, are they any, under any obligation to continue to do it as affordable housing?
Yes, sir. The tax credits carry a Lura of another 15 years. And then the City of Montrose actually donated the land, and they put an additional 10-year Lura on it. So I don't know that it's so much that we would lose it, but we felt like we were in the position to, to do the best job of rehabbing it and keeping it as a very nice place for these low-income folks, 30% to 60% AMI, or the families that we serve there.
Well, we're all big fans of local control.
So what I'm hearing you say is, these other persons would have no responsibility or requirement to maintain the quality of it?
They would have minimum standards, and again, we just felt like we could, we could do that a little better.
Lots of questions about the project, not so many about the grant, because I think we've seen these before. But let me just go through the questions for the public. When we agree to this, we're basically a pass-through agent on these. So they are borrowing the money. We are applying for the CDBG grant on their behalf. They are responsible for paying it back. It doesn't obligate the city to pay it back, but would require a little bit of our staff time, perhaps the two of you, to help with some paperwork. Is that all correct? Is there any additional information?
Yes, so the city receives the money and then distributes the money to the contractors as, as work is done. So yes, we're a pass-through, and then, then of course, there's, there's some work to be done on the administrative side in collaboration with the Housing Authority.
Okay, so what we're giving permission, or what we would be giving permission for when this comes to council is acting as that pass-through organization for the grant so that they can do this stuff?
Yes, since it's a grant of over $50,000, it needs to be approved by council.
And just one more comment. We have hired a consultant to do the CDBG application just to alleviate extra burden on our staff as well as yours.
That's great. We appreciate that. It doesn't look like council has any other questions, any other comments from staff that you feel like there's another piece out there that we need to know before we see this? Okay, great.
Thank you again so much.
Thanks so much.
I think we're all pretty excited.
Yeah, it's great. Next up is the Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout and Backage Road Design Contract Award. I will turn it over to our city engineer, Scott Murphy. And Scott, you're always great at giving some background information, because I think the public is super intrigued now that it made the front page of the paper. Oh, I think David Reed can hear us, and so I would imagine he's going to rejoin our conversation now that we're done talking about that.
I am here, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Murphy.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. And that was my first question. If you'd like me to run through all of the background again. We've talked about it at the development agreement, but I'm happy to, and prepared to run through it if you'd like.
I think if you talk about it a little bit, because when the public has questions, it's super easy for the city clerk or myself to point people towards the work session, agenda, recording when we talked about that issue. And so for that sake, that would be great.
Okay, yep, I'll run through her. So in your packet here, we're considering the award of a design contract to Felsburg-Holton-Uleveg out of the Front Range for $215,211.40. So this work is for the design studies and the design associated with the roundabout and the southern reach of the backage road. So with that, I'll make reference to Exhibit B in the drawing. So as you can see on that exhibit, and I think those are in the packets for anyone online. When we did the Woodgate realignment project, we knew that the intersection with East Oak Grove and Woodgate would ultimately become a roundabout. However, at that time, we didn't have all the property necessary to do it. So, you know, roundabouts have a pretty large footprint, so when we go in on those products, we have to negotiate with the adjacent landowners to try and purchase the little triangles we need off of each property. At that time, the owner wasn't interested, or we couldn't come to terms on the price. They, they talked, we talked it through with them, but couldn't come to terms on the price. And so we went forward with the realignment project, which with that, we had deadlines with that landowner in order to get the property acquired from there. And then we were going to keep this in our capital plan to work towards when the opportunity arose. If we were to do like something like eminent domain, where you, you still have to purchase it, but you condemn it essentially, you have to be ready to go to construction. And so we didn't, we weren't ready to do that at that time, and generally, we try and avoid going that route. And that worked out well. In this case, we had new owners that were then interested in working with us and moving forward, and we didn't have to go that route. So, you know, building traffic in the area, some of the, some of the traffic problems we have, obviously, when Woodgate meets East Oak Grove, if you're hanging a left there during the busy periods, it's a pretty challenging left. We, we knew that from the get-go, and so that was one of the, one of the main drivers for the roundabout there. But the second piece of that is what I'm calling the Woodgate Backage Road. So as you go north from the roundabout, you start getting into Office Depot, Harbor Freight, Big Five, Penn Mall area, even, you know, Murdochs, when you get up towards Encanto and some of those residential areas. All of those areas are left to try, and if they want to go southbound on Townsend, the way that area was developed, they have no choice but to hang a left there with an unprotected signal or hang a right and make a U-turn, which causes its own problems at other intersections. So the, in response to that, the city's comp plan and the Townsend Access Control Plan that's put together by CDOT have always envisioned a backage road that, you know, somewhere in the area, the alignment was never exact, but envisioned a backage road to allow those areas to drain down to a signal so that they can safely get onto southbound Townsend. When this project came about, we, the owners of the land that immediately adjacent to the backage road shown in the exhibit here were interested in that backage road, but we also wanted to make sure that that wouldn't be a road to nowhere. So we've been talking to the owners to the north as well and have verbal agreement with them and are working to finalize and secure that as well. So that's in the works separate from this. And then another driver for this project is All Points Transit. So All Points Transit's been working on finding a transit center for their kind of long-term, where they're going to live forever kind of place. And it's proven pretty challenging, so it's hard to find something that's centrally located with good pedestrian access and large enough to support their long-term needs. We had been eyeing the site near the public workshop on San Juan. Turned out that one, as they started doing their long-term growth forecasts, and they're now operating with bus dang at the state level, they need a little more room. And so this is a great opportunity. This landowner has expressed interest and has entered into an LOI with them to purchase the land. So it allows us to work on our capital priority needs, which are the roundabout and the backage road, while supporting All Points and while also supporting economic development. So this developer who owns a parent parcel that we're working with is also interested in developing housing and commercial properties here and redeveloping the Penn Mall. They own the Penn Mall as well. So it's a great three or four for, to also get some economic vitality out of the project.
I have one quick question related to the All Points. In that design, I don't see a pullout for All Points off of that backage road.
Correct. So the, the location wasn't known at that time, but yeah, they would have, it's likely to be across from the one near, the southern one there, just to the south of Penn Mall.
Where the A is?
Yes, where that, yep, where that A section is labeled there. So their current site, and sorry, I don't have the ability to project because I didn't grab the Zoom, but their current conceptual site has the main entrance off of the backage road, and then all of their circulation is interior to their site. So they're able to wrap the buses around the transit center, kind of stack and store along the way, go back out to the backage road, which is a lot easier for the buses to then have direct access to the roundabout off of the backage road instead of needing to access off of Oak Grove, which is a, you know, higher speed, higher volume arterial.
And I also think it's key, you just said, all of their stacking and pulling through and turning around, they're utilizing their property for that. They aren't, they aren't going to be stacking buses on that Woodgate extension or using the roundabout as their turning point. They're going to be doing that internal to their property.
Correct. Yep, 100% self-contained. And yeah, it's another great point too, because, you know, even buses pulling off, you know, or, you know, they slow down and need to back, so having that off the back of the road, which is a lot lower volume, kind of a local street, serve them a lot better and serve us a lot better, so. Yeah, the stars aligned well. So going into the design, we put out an RFP without pricing, which is pretty typical for roundabouts. They're specialized enough, and there's a lot of horror stories out there of roundabouts that get designed wrong. These little nuances, you get the geometry wrong, the circulation speed wrong, all these things, and they are pretty unsafe. So we wanted to make sure we had very qualified people working on it. With that, we only received two proposals. One was from FHU that I'd mentioned and making recommendation on, and Landmark. Through this process, we collectively assign scores based on all kinds of rating criteria, and then start with the highest rated proposer and then try and work out price. So then we kind of fine-tune if they have any questions on the scope of the project, get that pricing. If that pricing comes back within what, within what we expect, then we move forward. We had budgeted, our, internally on our cost estimations, anticipated this to cost about $250,000. So we're, we're well within what we anticipated it to cost. But just to run through real quick what the design will entail, so a lot of the surveying, base map work. We'll update the traffic study, so we've done a lot of traffic studies as part of the Woodgate realignment. Now that we have the advantage of, we have actual traffic on it and, and can check the assumptions, we also know more since that study was done of development pressures in the area. So we can make more accurate projections of what the forecasting will be. Those get used to make sure that the roundabout is functional and if it needs any auxiliary turn lanes or anything of that sort, to make sure that it's good for its design life. With that, we do the standard, you know, geotechnical hydraulic, hydrologic things, all the design studies needed to design drainage and, and the road section, all those things. We do have a little bit of platting work. That's part of the development agreement. Since we're doing all of the survey and all of the design of everything anyway, it's really just adding a couple lines on the map to add, to turn that into a plat. And then some utility extensions, relocation of conflicting utilities, and then obviously getting plan specs and estimate all together for construction. And then obviously throughout all of that, it's in their contract that they need to coordinate with All Points to make sure that everything we're doing matches with what they're doing, you know, horizontally, vertically, utilities, all of that. And they are underway on their initial design work. So with that, the project schedule, so we are looking to start now. This was an unbudgeted project. We didn't know this opportunity was going to arise. We didn't know where All Points was going to land. All these things kind of stayed fluid. So we did have some, in the past, budget placeholders to support All Points. So this is now all coming to kind of fruition. Schedule-wise though, we look to, preliminary scheduled to do the Niagara Hillcrest Roundabout starting this winter. When that would complete, we would then go into this, construction of this one. So construction on the product is, if all goes well, and budget pending would start late 2024. But in order to hit that deadline, we need to start on design now. So we'd start design now, spread that between two years. So about 50% of this, we figure it'll hit this year, and then we have a proposal in the 2024 budget for the balance to carry into 2024. And then we are also joined here by David Schitt with Delmont. So they were one of the subs under FHU. It's kind of the best of all worlds, yet FHU has a lot of roundabout geometry experience. They do a lot of the, the traffic side of things, and then they use Delmont for a lot of the surveying and utility work, which is great to have local representation for that, because there's a lot of coordination with all utility companies and groundproofing things. So it's a great team. It's the same team that did Miami and Hillcrest and is also working on Niagara and Hillcrest now. And that's, that one's gone excellent. So excellent team. We're really glad they proposed on it and happy to answer any questions.
Make sure your mic is on and...
How are you going to handle the existing traffic load you have through that intersection?
So we plan all of our capital projects to make sure that we have viable detour routes. So keeping the pressure on, so the goal is to have 6,700 done and paved and available this year, so that helps that detour. Because that's going to be important for Niagara and Hillcrest. And then once Niagara and Hillcrest is open, so that's why we're sequencing this, to start after Niagara and Hillcrest is complete. And so that will be open, that'll be kind of your primary, you know, next road up detour. And then between Ogden and Niagara will be your main east-west. But it'll be, they're painful, just like when we closed the other roundabouts. They really demonstrate the importance of those intersections, because they're, they're painful closures. And we, we write the contracts to have incentives on timing on these high-impact ones. And then what we didn't have previously was the 6,700 extension. So, you know, where they had to take that jog out and around and add all that traffic to it. With these upcoming two roundabouts, we now have the advantage of having 6,700 complete. You know, all things, if all goes well. And so that's, it should just get easier with time as these, the routes that we're putting people on to get better and better.
For the timing, what is the, the timeline for the Niagara Hillcrest?
So Niagara Hillcrest, we have a lot of storm work that we need to get done in the winter. And so we're hoping to bid that. We've gotten all the critical acquisitions done. There's one left that we just need to sign. And we're hoping to bid that this fall and then for like a January start. So hit that first thing. So that'll, you know, impact school tra, we try and do as little impact to school traffic as possible, because that's usually the highest, you know, concentrated traffic load. Unfortunately, with all these stacking up, we would impact the school traffic in the spring. And, you know, try and sequence the work so we can try and keep maybe one of the two roads open during the duration. But they would, that would be done by the time school gets in in the fall, so you're not impacting school traffic twice, just. And that's how we did, I think, if I remember right, Miami, Hillcrest, they, they closed that the day after school started. And then if I remember right, it went partially into the fall, so you impacted one of those shoulder seasons, but take advantage of most of the summer with them being out. If that makes sense.
Any other questions about the design contract for this roundabout? Not now, Scott, but maybe at the end of work session, you can give us an update on 6,700.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, thanks. Okay, then we'll move on to a cable franchise agreement with Spectrum Pacific West LLC. And I'll turn this over to our city attorney, who, he and his team have been working hard on this, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a handout for those of you that are here in person. It's just a copy of the negotiated agreement. And then I'll try and put the, just an electronic version of it up on the screen so that Mr. Reed can see it where he is. I think I'll need Greg Story's assistance for that. I need a screen share on Zoom, I think.
This, this one here?
No, it'll be the Word document right there.
Okay.
I think it is that document right there. Perfect. Thank you so much. So let me hand out... If you'll just pass those down, I'd appreciate it. Or you can look at it on the screen. I figured it'd be easier to read, easier to read in paper form. Here you go, Bill, if you want one. Chris. And also, we have a special guest today joining us by Zoom. It's Mr. Ken Felman. Ken, can you hear me okay? Ken, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us for this discussion.
Happy to be here.
And for those of you who don't know, Mr. Felman was our outside counsel that we retained to assist us in negotiating this agreement with Charter Cable. He did a wonderful job, and he has a very fluent understanding of franchise law. Mr. Felman, would you like to walk the counsel through the process here and the document that's in front of them?
Sure. Thanks, Ben, and again, good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Let me ask you first how you want to proceed. I've got some notes here on a little bit about the background of where we started, and then I was going to hit some highlights of some major terms in the agreement. I know you've seen a copy of it. I don't know how deeply you have dug into it. We would be here pretty much for the rest of the day if we went through section by section, so I clearly don't want to do that. Is it okay with you if I kind of proceed along the lines that I just described, and then you can jump in with questions as we go?
Absolutely. I think that we just need the high-level picture of, of what we're doing here. That would be great.
Great, great. Well, so generally speaking, cable franchising is, is one of the unique things that cities get to do. It's kind of a legal, legally created partnership between the federal government and the local government. The state has no role here. There are some states that have taken franchising away from its local governments. That has not happened in Colorado. So essentially, think of franchising as, you know, granting permission to a cable company to use the public rights of way to run its business, and we have the police power authority to do that, but within the constraints of federal law. The Federal Cable Act puts some limitations on how far we can go and where we can go in, in a number of areas. And in recent years, particularly during the last administration, the FCC adopted rules that unfortunately created some further preemptions of local authority, and I'll mention that in a second. The other thing to remember as kind of a foundational issue, this only applies to cable television, which you need to think of as your video programming. So while Charter or Spectrum provides video packages, packages of video programming and internet service, and if you want it, telephone service, we don't get to franchise the internet part, and we don't get to franchise the telephone part. We're preempted by state law from doing that. So everything in this document is pretty much limited to the video part of the relationship between the cable company and the city. So that's, that's kind of the background. The new FCC rule that I wanted to mention is for years, cable companies have, well, the federal law allows a city to charge up to 5% of cable gross revenues as franchise fees. Most cities that I'm aware of, most of the communities that we've worked in in Colorado and in other parts of the country, set their franchise fee at 5%. Montrose has traditionally set it at 3%, and our understanding at the staff level is that Counsel was interested in continuing it there, was not interested in raising it. It is a fee that the cable operator is required to pay, but it is also a fee like a tax, or I shouldn't say like, it's not like a tax, but similar to a tax. It is allowed by federal law to be passed through to subscribers. So whatever revenue the city gets from the cable company for the franchise fee, they're going to put it on their subscriber bills, and in that section at the end of the bill that shows, you know, the FCC regulatory fee and the Sals tax and the 911 fee, there will be a city franchise fee in there that the subscriber will pay. The new federal rules that the FCC adopted, which were mostly upheld in court, said that in-kind or non-monetary benefits in a franchise. So for example, Charter provides free service to a number of public, public areas within the city. And the new rules basically say that non-monetary benefits count against the 5% franchise fee. So cable companies all across the country, if they want to, can start saying, if you're getting 5%, we're not going to give you a free service to these buildings anymore. You can start paying for that service. Or we'll give you the service, but we're going to deduct the value from your franchise fee. That's not as big of a problem in Montrose as it is in other places because we're still at 3%. So even if they wanted to say they didn't want to go over the 5%, we still have some wiggle room in the value of that service. And I don't think the value of the non-monetary services that, that they are providing would exceed what franchise fees would be if we were at 5%. So, but theoretically, it could get to that point at some point in the future. So that's a little bit about the regulatory background. I, I think in, the first thing I wanted to mention was in Section 2.3 on police powers. What you see in a lot of franchises are, you either see franchises say, these are the rules, and they don't reference a city's police power, or they do, but they say, in the event of a conflict between the police powers and the franchise, the franchise will control. I don't like that kind of language. I always advise against it because I don't think it's fair for this city council. Frankly, I'm not sure it's legal for this city council to contract away a future city council's ability to adopt an ordinance regarding the use of the streets. And you'll see in this section that, right at the end of Section 2.3, if there's a conflict, the local law, as long as it hasn't been preempted by the federal or state law, is going to control. So that, that is a major benefit that we've, we've preserved. Ben, if you're controlling the document, or whoever is, have you jumped to Section 6.4?
Sure. I will scroll down to that. Give me just a minute, Ken.
Okay.
6.4.
So you, you see the heading is new development underground. That's consistent, I think, with city code, and the important thing I wanted to point out, Mayor and Council members, is like many cities now, I know Montrose has looked at either individually, I know Region 10 has been very involved in putting in its own fiber optic infrastructure, and many communities have had provisions that say, if a company is trenching in our streets, we may want to put conduit in there. And we should be able to do that. We, the city, will cover the incremental cost of doing it, but you have to let us know if you're going to open a trench, and we get to decide whether we want to add something for our own governmental communications network. So we do have that provision in here. That's something that we never used to see in cable franchising years ago, because of course, it was before local governments got involved in having their own network facilities. Let's see, the, the next thing I was going to mention is Section 10.1, which is the franchise fee. I already mentioned it, though, in dealing with that new FCC rule. So we're at 3% of gross revenues. Counsel certainly has the right to have that increase. Like I mentioned, it would be some additional revenue to the city, but it's going to get passed through to subscribers, so Montrose citizens and businesses that subscribe to cable would be paying for it. I just wanted to highlight that for you. Probably one of the more important sections of this entire document is Section 13, and that deals with the access channel and access programming. The first thing we wanted to do was, you know, the last time Montrose did a franchise, we had, all broadcasts were in standard definition. It might have been digital, but it was standard definition. And then we have switched, in many cases, to high-definition. Most of the channels, if not all of the channels, you watch today are in high-definition. High-defen, the, the transition to high-definition was not the flip of a switch. For those of you who are as old as I am or in that generation and remember the switch from black and white to color, we didn't also have colored TVs on one day, and all the black and white TVs were gone. It took time to get there. And like that transition, a lot of people had traditional standard-definition televisions, and for a period of time, the cable channels that cable operators provided for governments to show their government broadcasting was on a standard definitional channel. Charter is going to give the city a high-definition channel and is going to carry a high-definition signal. The city's responsible for purchasing whatever equipment that it needs, and frankly, it probably already has a lot of that equipment because you can't buy the old equipment anymore. What happens now is we probably produce a lot of programming in high-definition, and it gets downconverted to be shown in standard definition on the cable system. Charter insists that it's going to take them close to nine months to get a high-definition facility up and running, so we have a provision that says, within 270 days of notice, they will, they will give the city a high-definition channel. We've already told them that we want it. We've told them to start getting ready for it, and on day one of the day that you approve the franchise, that formal notice should be sent to them, so we have that clock ticking. In Section 13, I think it's 13.2, one of the things that often causes problems in communities is when a cable company changes the channel. I forget what channel you're on now. Can somebody remind me where? 191?
Yeah.
Okay. So if, if you, if you're on 191 and they wanted to change it to like, you know, 817, those people who do watch it on a regular basis, it would take some education. It would kind of, people are going to wonder, what happened to my city council programming? And we have provisions in 13.2 that they have to give us at least 90 days' notice if they're going to move it, and they're going to provide the city with up to $3,000 so that the city can use that money for outreach and education to relocate the channel. Doesn't always happen, but if it does happen, you're going to be glad that you have this. 13.3 is the return line. So there's a return line currently into the building where you are right now, and that will remain, the return line is, if you think of cable mostly as one-directional, like it sends a signal into your home, the return line is the capacity to send the signal from the civic building out to the Charter Communications head end and then onto their cable system. So they have an obligation to keep that line in place and to maintain it. And if we do move at some point and you have a different location where you're going to be holding your meetings, there is an opportunity for them to build a new line, but it would be at the city's expense, so we would have to consider that. That's another reason for having a robust fiber optic network, because if you have a lot of that and you move your location in the future, it'll probably reduce the cost of a new return line. 13.5 is something else we were pleased to get in this franchise, which is a grant of $15,000 to, and this is over and above franchise fees. This is covered by a different part of the Cable Act, so it doesn't count against the 3% or the 5% cap on franchise fees, but Charter is going to provide the city with $15,000 to cover capital expenses that the city may incur for equipment and other capital costs related to the, the government channel and the programming that you put on it. And then the last thing I would mention is in Exhibit A to the agreement, I mentioned that one of the non-monetary benefits that cable companies often have provided in the past is complimentary service to public buildings, and I, I just wanted to highlight for you, you currently have and under the franchise will continue to receive complimentary service at City Hall in the main lobby, at City Hall in the IT meeting room, in the public safety complex, in this building here, and at the Montrose Pavilion. So in my opinion, those are the highlights, but again, feel free to ask me questions about any, any parts of the document, and we'll do our best to answer them.
Thank you very much. No, I think that was a great overview of the highlights of, of the changes and what things to pull out that we should be looking at in that franchise agreement. Counsel, any questions about the franchise agreement? Okay. Ben, can I ask you to stay on for just one second on Zoom? Because the very next item up for discussion are changes that we may consider making to our city charter, and we can start with the ones that you suggested under our franchise agreements, because I think, you know, that it leads right in. And do you have a second to stay on Zoom with us for that?
Absolutely. And just so that you all know, I'll be with you tomorrow at the meeting where this is going to be introduced, so I'll be available for questions or to if I can come up.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I think with that, we'll, we'll go straight into the next item, which is the City Charter Review Committee update. A committee has been meeting to look at changes that we need to make to our charter, that we would need to request voters' permission to our charter, and in, and part of that is, has to do with our franchise agreement. So I'm going to kick it back to our city attorney, Ben Morris, to talk about this specifically, and then we can talk about the big picture of other changes we might be looking and asking for the voters' approval on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to change the screen share here to a different display. We're going to show you a PowerPoint, and I put Ken's slides here at the first part of it, so he'll be able to talk about this, and then he can be on his way. He helped us with Article 4 of our charter review. I have a red line of that, and I'll just do that as a handout again, just like last time. Let me give those of you who are here a copy. Thank you. And Bill and Ann, here's a copy for you. Chris, here's one for you. And I have a couple of extras if we need them. So we went through this, and Ken was kind enough to lend his expertise to me in regard to just looking through the charter to see if there's anything in there that might be out of date or that perhaps was preempted at the federal level, as he was discussing a moment ago, in regard to the Charter Cable Agreement. Ken, do you want to talk about what you saw? And, and the counsel can see your red line along with the changes that I made. So you want to talk about that?
Sure. Thanks, Ben. I, you know, I guess the biggest issue, I, I would say, in the years that I've been doing this, and I think I negotiated my first cable franchise in 1985, so it's been a few years, I, I would say that a handful, not, but not a majority, maybe 25% of the home rural municipalities in Colorado have had provisions in their chart, city charters or town charters that require all franchises to go to a vote of the people. And that wasn't just cable TV. It, you know, back in the old days in the 60s, when we used to do telephone franchises, electric franchises, gas franchises, you name it, had to go to a vote. The Federal Cable Act was adopted in 1994, and in that, I'm sorry, 1984. In that statute, the Congress set out criteria for a new company or a new cable franchise, if a company came in and wanted their first franchise, what the criteria was under which a local franchising authority could grant it or deny it. And then a separate section of that statute, they set out criteria on whether you had to renew a franchise or whether you could reject an existing and incumbent cable operator's request for a franchise renewal. And again, there are specific criteria and findings that would have to be made before you could say, yes, we're going to renew, or no, we're going to kick you out of town. And if you didn't make those findings and you didn't have that evidence, under federal law, you cannot reject a franchise renewal. So back in the 90s, and I forget exactly what year, I think Quest might have, or CenturyLink or whatever, Lumen, I think they might have still been US West even at the time, they had talked about getting into the cable television business, and they sought a cable franchise from the city of Boulder. And Boulder had a charter provision similar to yours, requiring a vote, and, and the city attorney there said, I see what the federal law says, but I have an obligation to uphold the charter, so we're going to have a vote on this. And they knew that that was going to cause US West to file a lawsuit in federal court and say, we don't think we should have to go to a vote. And the end result of that case was in a very comprehensive and, I think, well-written decision by Chief Judge at the time, Louis Babcock. He basically said, look, the statute sets out the criteria that a cable operator has to meet, and if they meet it, they get a franchise. And if they don't meet it, the city can say no. But that's statutory criteria. Going to a vote, by definition, the only criteria is the whim of the voters. There is no way to ensure that a decision to grant or to deny a franchise would, would be consistent with the statute. And in fact, it's be consistent with the statute, and in fact, it probably wouldn't be, because who knows what voters rely upon when they go into the ballot box. And because of that, the judge ruled that Boulder's charter provision was preempted by federal law, and it could not require a vote. Now, that was all Boulder needed. Boulder thought that was what the decision was going to be, they didn't feel the need to appeal it, and they said, all right, we've been told what we have to do, and that's what we're going to do, and they changed their charter and did not require an election. Because it didn't get appealed, it technically does, that court decision does not have the force of law on every other Colorado jurisdiction. So any other jurisdiction could say, you know what, I don't care about that case, I'm going to enforce my charter, and then they would get sued, and then there'd be another case, and it would probably come out the same way. But because it wasn't appealed, it's not automatically binding on every other jurisdiction. In the years since, I would say I've probably had 15 occasions with home-rule municipalities where the city attorney has looked at that and said, yeah, even though it's not technically binding, I get it, I understand the law, I understand the judge's decision, I'm going to recommend to my council that we not take this to a vote, and that ultimately we amend this provision out of our charter. There was one time where the city attorney said, no, we're going to go to a vote anyway because I don't care what that case is, and, and I had been working with that city so long that they did that once, but 10 years later, when they renewed their franchise, I was around at that point, and they said, no, we're, we're okay now, we're just going to not require a vote. So basically, what I'm telling you is that over the years, many Colorado municipalities that have had these provisions in their charter have either left them in but not enforced them and not required a vote, or they have changed it with respect to cable television, and that was my recommendation to Ben and to the city manager staff, and that is where we ended up here.
Okay, thank you, Ken. I'm going to see if I can change to the next slide here, and I think you've more or less covered everything I put in these slides up to the last paragraph there. I will just note, we changed one typo where it said city manager, I think someone had done a word search years ago for anything that says city manager, maybe to capitalize it or something like that, but it, it actually was talking about a different kind of manager, like the manager of the franchisees organization, and so we wanted to get rid of that. Also, we have, as counsel knows, been going through, and we did an audit of the municipal code for everywhere it mentions our penalty provisions. We tried to make them all refer back to Section 1-2-3 of the code so that they would all be the same, and you only had to change that one section if the penalty itself ever needed to be changed. We noticed penalty provisions in the charter, we're doing the same kind of thing there. Finally, there was a request from city staff through Bill, and I think Ann maybe had done a little research, sorry if I'm misremembering this, about railroads, and Fort Collins, I think, had some good language that you all had liked in regard to railroads. So I added that as a new Section 24 in your red line, and if you flip that over to the last page, you'll see it in red. That is more or less a, I plagiarized what Fort Collins did, so I copied that. It would not be retroactive to anything that we already have, we can't do that, but for any new track or changes in routes, I think we could. So at this point, that's what you've got for Article 4 of the charter. Anything that you want to ask while Ken is on the line? I don't want to hold him here, I know he's got other stuff that he's trying to take care of this morning.
So does counsel have questions specific to Article 4 of the charter, which is franchises, public utilities, and contracts? We are not, we're not voting on this, obviously, but do you have any questions about these recommended changes to the charter for Section 4?
Not here.
Okay. Great. Then I think that we can let Mr. Feldman go, I know he's got a busy morning, and our city attorney and city attorney staff will talk to us about some of the other changes that could, should, or may be taken to voters on the city charter. Thank you, Mr. Feldman.
Okay, thank you all, I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you very much, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, so I think Ken has left us now, and I'll move on to some more general comments.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
How is this, this going to affect?
Make sure your mic's on and you're talking into it, because we're on.
Yes, ma'am. How's this going to affect the city's voting on the new agreement? Does, does, if, and say that the city has to put it out to a vote, or could we just approve the new city charter with, I guess I didn't quite understand.
Given that, that's fine, no problem. Given the explanation we just heard from Mr. Feldman, there is this case law that indicates, although it's non-binding, we kind of know what the outcome would be if we had to do it all over again, and we think it'd be the same outcome. The case law says that federal law has preempted us to an extent in regard to having these elections for cable TV franchise renewals, which is exactly what we're doing here. So although there isn't binding precedent with this example out there for other judges to look at, I think the outcome is almost predetermined, the other judge would probably do what this previous one did and tell us that we've been preempted. So instead of taking it to a vote of the people, we believe that the law is out there, that it's clear enough that we can go ahead and do it by ordinance.
Okay.
So I have prepared with Ken's help, an ordinance for you all to consider, I believe first reading will be tomorrow at the council meeting, and it will be this agreement we just went over in detail first, before we got into the charter itself.
But there's two different things, I feel like sometimes it's a little confusing, because you are suggesting that we, by ordinance, approve the franchise agreement with charter, and secondly, we are in the process of reviewing changes that would be made to our city charter.
Correct.
And so, I don't know if it's the word "charter" is involved in both, but it's very confusing. But our city charter, any changes that we make to that need to go to voters in a municipal election.
Absolutely.
And so we are looking at things that we might want to ask voters to consider approving or not in next April's election. And one of those changes is cleaning up and saying clearly that we are going to, in the future, approve franchise agreements by ordinance.
I couldn't have said it better, you just explained it, yes.
Okay, so there's two separate things here, and, and any changes that we make to the city's charter, which is our governing document, that has to be approved by voters. The franchise agreement with charter communications, we're going to vote on tomorrow night by ordinance, we do not need to bring.
Correct.
But might, might I add, Mayor, that is just to bring that into consistency with what we believe the state of the law is now, in more or less a house cleaning, cleaning matter, I believe.
Yes.
And it might be helpful for us to actually just refer to this upcoming franchise agreement as the Spectrum West, or Spectrum Pacific West, to eliminate a little bit of that confusion.
We can do that.
That's an excellent suggestion, because of the word "charter" appearing everywhere, it's hard to follow, I understand.
I don't want people to get baffled.
And it'll be behind us, though, in, in just a couple of weeks, because we'll, any ordinance gets read twice, so we'll do a first reading tomorrow night, is that correct?
Correct.
And then two weeks later, we'll have a second reading.
Correct.
And then we will not speak of the franchise agreement with Spectrum West charter again.
I don't intend to ever mention it again.
So I think, I don't think that we'll have a confusion going forward between now and next April.
Right.
I anticipated you'd go around in 20 years.
Huh? Okay.
Okay, so let's shift gears a little bit. We're going to move away from franchises and Spectrum West, and we're going to talk more about the city charter as a whole. Several months ago, not too long after you all had hired me, I was asked to look at the charter, and we, we formed a little informal working group to go through the charter together, and we did that. It took a while, it's complicated, and you want to be super careful, that you look at it thoroughly and, and get all of this information right. So we took our time, we went through the whole document together, we changed mayors and mayor pro temp in the process, so we've had a couple of, of you on here, which is good, it spreads the knowledge across council a little broader. Anyhow, now that we've been through that whole document, I'm coming to you with some requests for guidance as to what you want me to do next. You will see on the slide here, there's three different boxes there, you know, the minimal changes, a balanced approach, or maximal changes to the charter. This is sort of an overall, I'm not talking about anything in particular, just how do you want us to look at this, and when we talk again about making any proposed changes for the voters to approve on the charter, do you want to see just the stuff like I just talked about, that I think is probably either necessary or highly advisable, or would you like to go a little broader and do things that are maybe not absolutely necessary but are just a good idea, or something in between, which is what I'm calling a balanced approach? I would recommend probably the balanced approach to you as a general philosophy here, but I work for you and I'm going to do what you tell me, so if you don't mind chatting a little bit and giving me some, some guidance.
I don't think we want to have to keep going back.
Can you make sure your mic is on and you're speaking into it?
I don't think we want to continue to have to go back every year with an election, so I think it's best to do it. I agree with the balanced approach, just take care of what we really need to do and then move forward with that aspect of it.
Okay.
I also like the idea of, we, as we had previously discussed at one point, putting some of the housekeeping items on one ballot issue, and then putting other items on, that are less housekeeping and more substantive changes on a different ballot item. And the reason for that is because we, we understand the necessity of, if we put everything on one, there might be one item that people object to, and all of our changes will fail because of that one item, and rather than heavily loading our agenda on one budget line, spreading it out to where people will understand that they're voting on housekeeping items on item A, for example, and more substantive changes on item B, et cetera.
So are you suggesting, though, that there would be two questions at the next council election, at the next regularly scheduled election, one for housekeeping and one for more substantive?
Yes, if not more, depending on what our items are and what we decide.
Myself, I'm leaning toward the minimal changes and balanced, kind of like right there on that line between the two. I know that there are things on the charter that, because of state legislature law changes that, that have to be revamped, but that there are things probably that we might just say, oh, hey, that sounds better, let's go ahead and do that, that may not be necessary.
Yeah, I, I would, I would tend to agree with, with Ed. I, I think that obviously we need to take care of the housecleaning measures to bring our charter into compliance with current, current state of the law, but I, unless there's a burning public desire, which I have not heard, that our charter be changed for the sake of change, I, I would be inclined to say it should be a minimal change.
I would agree, I think there are some things in our, I think it's going to depend on the issues as we start to dig into them. There are some things in our, that our charter doesn't touch, and therefore it's kind of ambiguous, and there's been some recent legislation, not legislation, lawsuits. I'll give an example that wouldn't apply to Montrose, but in the city of Thornton, they elect their mayor separately from the rest of their city council, and after serving eight years on maybe council, their mayor wanted to run and serve eight more years as mayor, and they, there was a lawsuit about, you know, you can't serve more than eight years because those are essentially the same job, and then they said, no, those are different jobs. Those kinds of issues can be clarified, because we're home rule, those kinds of issues can be clarified in our charter, and we do have some confusion right now in our charter about whether someone can combine two-year terms in the at-large seat with four-year terms in a district seat. And there is no guidance from our charter, and there is no guidance at the state level, and I think we can, we can write that to make it more clear. So I don't know if someone would call that a minimal change, it certainly would prevent us from maybe seeing a lawsuit going forward. I think that if we were taking something forward to the voters that was really kind of far out there and, and not something other cities did, but we wanted to try it, maybe that would be a good reason to put that as a separate ballot issue, but if we're really just making changes that allow our charter to conform with current state laws and clarify how we do things so we can avoid being sued going forward, I don't necessarily think we need to break those out for voters. But I think that's going to depend on what we decide we want to ask voters to change.
And I, if I could jump in also, I would agree with you, Mayor. The one thing in addition to that, I would say, though, that, and just perhaps using term limits as an example, it seems to me that we should not propose anything for the ballot that could be argued to be favorable of the current council in terms of term limits, that we want to make sure that we are extremely neutral and not benefited one way or the other in a decision that would involve our elected office.
Right, I think, I think that would, I think our city attorney can help us, I think that's pretty standard procedure, when you, when you change, let's call them the rules that govern term limits, that, that those would be for future councils and not the current council, so you aren't asking voters to approve something that directly affects you.
This is analogous to the salary of city council, this comes up every decade or so, and the current council that's voting on it can't give themselves a raise, basically, it would apply after their terms are done.
Right, yeah, I, I don't think we're suggesting, I think council would have to be, come out publicly and say, we support the suggested changes to the charter, because if we can't come out and, and support the suggested change of the charter, we're the ones coming forward to the voters and saying, these are the things we think need to be changed. So I think, yes, it, it needs to be very clear that we're not making changes that then affect our elected position, I mean.
Right, that's, that's all I'm saying, is that I just want to make sure we're very clear on that point.
Yeah, I think we can make sure that that works that way.
And I think that, I, I certainly agree, that I would love to see this all on one ballot issue. I would love to have us have a non-contentious, pretty innocuous change as a housekeep, all of it as housekeeping, it'd be lovely, but I would like us to reserve the possibility of having that, if we choose to have something that is a little more contentious or more more, potentially more confrontational, that we have ourselves the option of allowing ourselves a second ballot line for the.
But Dave, but Dave, I might add, though, that, and, and I agree with, with what the mayor said, is that if we're proposing ballot changes, then we need certainly at least the majority of the council to be favorably, favorably disposed.
Oh, sure.
On those issues. So I, if we have it in two separate questions, we're standing, we're saying we support both of those, that still brings up controversy, I think.
Why don't we wait and see what changes we think need to be made to the charter that we're going to ask for voters' approval on, and if there's one that we think, gosh, this one might not, you know, this one might not get voters' full approval, even though we think that it's a good idea, we can reserve the right to make that its own separate ballot.
That was my thought.
Good idea.
That is my thought.
But I think we'll know that when we get there, versus perhaps we look at the suggested changes and say, you know what, these all make a lot of sense, we support all of these, we don't think these are going to be controversial in nature, and then we don't need.
That's exactly what I was asking.
Okay, I think we can always retain that option. That make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Back to our city attorney to keep going.
Thank you very much, that is useful input for me. And as you'll see here, we're just looking at a timeline slide, this gives you sort of an overall idea, these dates are pretty specific, some of them, obviously, we might have to. pretty specific. Some of them, obviously, we might have to change it by a couple of weeks if there's a conflict in schedules. But the general overview is that sometime in August, the working group is going to need to meet to separate out all the suggested changes. We're going to look at the easy stuff that we think is a definite yes, that really needs to be changed. And then there's going to be a harder group where we have to look at changes that are, what, more discretionary and decide, is this something that we want to do? Do we think the voters would support it or not? And decide whether or not to suggest it in the ballot. In September, early September, there's a council meeting on the 5th where we can probably just present the easy suggestions and make sure that council buys in on that, see if there's any changes. In mid-October, I think we can probably bring back the more difficult ones, the things that seem to have more of a political aspect to them, and decide, do you want to try this or not? And we'll make our decisions then about that. I called November 6th an overflow meeting. This is where, if there's anything we haven't done already, we'll discuss it at that point, just sort of to clean everything up. We're starting to get pretty late in the game at that point, so we need to be making up our minds and making sure that we're on the same page about all of it. February 7th, this is the first meeting in February of 2024, and this is where the council would authorize the ballot language to be sent to the county. This is done by ordinance. So you all would pass the ordinance, which basically says, this is what we all agree upon to suggest to the voters, and then the voters take it from there in the April election in 2024, and they'll decide whether they agree with you. So that's essentially just an overview. As I say, some of these dates may change by a week or two, but you get the general idea. Any questions about that before I move on? I just think it's helpful to have a general plan, so you kind of know what to expect. The mayor was talking about term limits. This is one of my questions for you. When I sat down and looked at this, I realized that I didn't know what you all wanted from me, so I wanted to hear it from you. Do you want me to take a stab at some clarification language in regard to term limits, districts, and all those kinds of things, or not? If you do, I'll be glad to make an effort to put something down. I have some guidance from CML that I would look to. I would not want to do anything novel or brand new in Colorado. I would look to other communities that have already tackled this issue in their charters and basically adapt it to Montrose. It's never, in my opinion, a good idea to be too innovative. As a lawyer, we're kind of stodgy. We want to make sure that someone else has already had the lawsuit and that it works over there before we try it here. Right, right. So that's my approach, anyway. What do you all think? What do you want to hear from me or see from me?
I kind of like the current conditions, and the reason why I do that is because it allows more community opportunity to get involved, based on the fact that not everybody wants to do a four-year term, or they don't want to do eight-year, 12-year, whatever term that we have. And so I really think that our current setup is viable. That's just my opinion, though.
I think it might be nice to find a little bit more clarity on, as Mayor Bynum was mentioning, can somebody serve on a two-year term as the at-large and then serve a four-year term? Just a little bit more clarity on that crossover between the at-large terms and district seat terms.
Absolutely. Because, well, I think that most of it, we don't need to bet it works. We've got five counselors, that's great. We've got four districts and one at-large, that's great. We have term limits that align with Colorado revised statute. Even though we're home rule, we could make up our own. I think our current term limits work really well. To refresh the public's memory, the current term limits are two four-year terms or three two-year terms. However, there is absolutely no clarification on what happens if you have a counselor who combines two-year terms and four-year terms. And even when I called the Secretary of State's office to ask that question four years ago, they said, there is no answer. We would recommend that you clarify that in your own city charter. And so in the past, I believe, the city of Montrose has had city counselors serve a two-year term, and then a four-year term, and then another two-year term. We've had counselors serve a four-year term and two two-year terms, every combination thereof. And until we get sued, it's okay, but it doesn't actually say you can do that. So I think that is the one particular issue around term limits that I would like the city to clarify. And I don't think there's a right or a wrong answer on if you can combine two and four years to get a total of six or eight. I don't think there's a right or wrong answer. I just think we need to clarify it.
And I would agree, because, you know, in my personal situation, I was appointed when Mr. Anderson resigned, the council appointed me, and per charter, I had to stand for election at the next regularly scheduled municipal, which was one year after my appointment. But then it was only then to fulfill the balance of the four-year term that Mr. Anderson vacated. And so the question becomes, because I have not served a full term, either by appointment or by election to fill the unexpired term, am I entitled, and I ask this as a question, not suggesting I'm going to do it, but am I, as an individual, entitled then, at the next election, to run for one four-year term and then another four-year term after that? Because I've never served a full term.
I believe Colorado revised statutes defines a full term as a half of a term or more, but if it's less than half a term, not. So I think in your case, you couldn't serve for 10 years, but your hands are pretty much tied. You wouldn't be able to serve for eight either. You would be effectively done after six. But I think that's the kind of thing that we can, because we're a home rule city, clarify in our own charter, so that we aren't getting different interpretations of how the revised statutes apply to us from different city attorneys. And I think that's, again, Thornton, they've been suing each other over this stuff. And you can avoid that by just saying, this is how we want it to work. And this is how, if you're appointed, like, for example, we could clarify, like in Mr. Reed's case, that because he was appointed, he had to run for election at the next cycle. But should he perhaps have been running for a four-year term at that point and not a two-year term? I think we could use more clarification.
Yeah, and I have, I guess my question would be, on the at-large position, why it's capped at three two-year terms when everyone else has had the opportunity for two four-year terms or eight years total? So it seems like we've got a difference in that situation that I don't quite understand.
Well, and you've had, just since I've been in Montrose, you've had three generations of city attorneys, and we've all read the same thing and come up with different conclusions. I think there are different good faith arguments that you can make and reach different outcomes. And that's a bad thing. We want it to be clear so that everyone who reads it, more or less, is going to reach the same conclusion, make it obvious so that the rules are known to the community and to the council. I like that. That would be my advice. Now, what we specifically do with it, I don't really care. I just think it needs to be clear.
Would you propose, it doesn't affect me, I'm done one way or the other, but would you propose having the two-year, someone could run for four two-year terms for a total of eight? I would imagine that that was originally created so that. Someone in a two-year seat would move over and out of a two-year seat into a four-year seat. It behooves them, then they don't have to run for election every two years. I didn't move over and run for the four-year seat because I would have been running against a fellow counselor at the time. So I chose, knowing that I would be limited to six years, to me that was, that was okay, rather than running against a fellow city counselor. So I think all of these things kind of come into play. If you were allowed to, if you were allowed to do four of the two-year terms, you might find folks staying in that for eight years. I mean, I've stayed in it for six. I don't know. There's pluses and minuses. I don't think there's a right or a wrong answer.
And I think clarification of that eight-year cap on whatever permutation it gets, clarification on that would be helpful, too.
I agree. I agree. And I mean, I could argue certainly in favor of three two-year terms, but the more important thing is to clarify.
I'm hearing support for an eight-year cap. Is that fair?
Except that gets confusing when someone is appointed and serves for nine months prior to running for the first time. So really, you run into cases where one could serve for nine years. And so I think when we say an eight-year cap, everything you decide, you have to dig a little bit deeper to make sure you're understanding what that means. Because, again, someone who's appointed in June has to run for election at the next regularly scheduled council.
I have an idea.
Great.
How about maximum eight years, and then partial terms only count if it's more than half of whatever the term was? So you might actually be on council more than eight years if you had less than half of, like, I think what David was talking about, less than half of a term that you started.
And that would be in alignment with the Colorado revised statutes. We would just clarify, I think, how two and four-year term fits into that.
Does that work for you all?
Yeah, I agree with that.
That works for me.
Ed, I can't read your expression. What are you thinking?
You know, I kind of like the eight-year max.
Okay.
But if you're sitting there talking about, say, you come on council after somebody got off for only three or four months, you're almost serving a full term. But say you got six or seven months left of a term from somebody that's leaving, then I could probably say, well, you know, it's really short, you know, then the possibility of going, getting eight years might work. But to sit there and say, okay, you're, somebody's into a six-month of a four-year term, and then you sit there and do another couple of four-year terms, that's 10 or 12 years on the council.
Well, that's why they have to run for the next regularly scheduled election. Someone could never be appointed and serve more than, if, than two years, because there would be an election.
Right.
We have city elections in the spring of every even number year. So the most is, let's say someone moved out of town in May, just immediately following a city municipal election, someone is appointed within 30 days, I believe, is what our charter says, then that person would not, would serve for 22 months. And I guess the question is, is 22 months, does that count as their first four years? Or, I mean, that's a great question. I don't think there's a right or wrong answer, but I think if we define it, then we have, we as a city are not subject to interpreting what the revised statutes would mean.
Would you like multiple options? And then you'll have to pick one ultimately, maybe by vote.
I think that the consensus of what I'm hearing is that the eight-year elected terms limit is great. The big confusion and the clarity we would like to see is on the appointments. If you're appointed to that position, the length of time, as we know, it's, anything over half of a term counts as a full term. But what if it's just right under half of a full term?
Right.
Just a clarity on that, I think, is what we need.
Yeah.
Well, how about we work on something? We can bring it back to, first, our working group and see what the committee thinks, and then we can bring it to the full council once there's buy-in at that level. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Okay. And I think I have a general idea there. I probably should have changed the slide here. This other one covers most of what we've been talking about. I'll give you a minute so you can read through those. I think we've already covered them.
That last one, for example, I think currently it says you have to sit out for one term before you can run again. So if someone in a four-year seat wasn't reelected or hit the end of their term limits, they have to wait four years. I think the way it's written, and this is not my intention, but as someone in a two-year seat, I'd have to sit out for two years before running again. And it just doesn't seem like that makes any sense. It feels like we should define the number of years and not use the word term, so that you have to sit out for four years, not one term. Because one term for, we have two different terms. And so I think that's where sometimes we're trying to follow CRS, and yet because we have two different length terms, it doesn't always line up with the Colorado law.
Would you think a four-year resting period?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree with that, too. I agree.
Without regard to terms, it should be a four-year.
Okay. Thank you for that.
It should be the election cycle, however, that happens four years later. Because if the election is April 7th in 2024 and April 1st in 2028, you'd hate to be like, well, that's not four years. That's four days short of four years. And I know you legal people, so.
All right. I think I've only got one more thing here that I needed to do. Sorry, there's a lot of latency with this, and it's taken me forever just to switch the slides. I'm going in the wrong direction. I don't want to go that way. Sorry. Come on. All right, this is the last one. New utilities. I had this question from city manager's office in regard to whether or not you have to go to a vote of the people when creating or acquiring a new public utility as a municipality. And the answer is yes and no. It depends on what the utility is. If it's anything other than Water Works, then I think you do. The exception there for Water Works means that you don't have to go to a vote of the people to create a new utility for that purpose. The interesting thing here is, what exactly does Water Works mean? Chris, I think you've looked into this a little bit. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So there really isn't a definition of Water Works in CRS, but let me pull up a memo that I wrote on this. All right. So as I said, there really isn't a definition for Water Works as the term Water Works. However, there is a water corporation, which includes combined water and sewer. So in reading different sections of the Colorado revised statutes, Water Works is likely going to encompass both any water or sewer facilities. So it's the complete cycle of the water that comes from the faucet and then sent back out into the river. So I think that is where the Water Works is going to, or the exception of Water Works will fall.
What about stormwater utility?
I believe that's likely going to fall within Water Works, because the stormwater is still going to go into sewage. There are other Colorado municipalities that have created stormwater via ordinance as opposed to, yeah, as opposed to a vote of the people.
Chris, what is Stillwater? Is that just a pond or something like that?
I'm sorry?
It said Stillwater. You mentioned Stillwater. What exactly is that?
I don't think he said that term, but.
I did not say Stillwater, so I guess I'm a little.
It wrote it down on the bottom. That's what I was reading.
Oh, the transcription is in error.
I think that's an AI program, and I've seen some pretty hilarious misstatements so far.
Okay. Again, I was just curious, is Stillwater, what is that? Is it ponds or whatever?
I would assume ponds, however, I do not.
The water you use in your still?
Yes.
I don't think giving us can explain.
For my moonshine business.
AI has its own parameters.
Look, he's trying to decide what we're all saying now. Let's just leave it alone.
So the purpose here, well, let's, let's take it back and put it in context. For our charter review, I don't think we need to add anything to that. I don't think, because of the way the legislature did this, that we're even really able to make that change, because we've been preempted. But because I was asked the question, I thought I'd make a slide for it and try and close the loop with you all and with Bill, so we were hopefully all on the same page. Yeah. And that's it for me on the charter. Unless you all have other questions, I've gotten some good feedback. Mayor Bynum will not make the previously scheduled next meeting of the, of the working group, so we're going to reschedule that.
Christine has already rescheduled it for the week later, hopefully.
Oh, okay. I haven't checked my email, so.
She's on it.
During the meeting. I didn't know she did that. Okay, great. Anything else for me before we move to our next item on the agenda? And where's Lisa? There you are. Go ahead. And I'll back you up if you need anything.
Keep going. This is a new item. Now we're going to talk about, yeah, not charter review, just for those playing along at home. This is a new law that the state legislature passed about campaign finance laws for municipal elections. And so I could give you lots of commentary, but I think I'll just turn over to our city clerk for the facts.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum. You are correct. This definitely relates to municipal elections, and we definitely have one coming up. So House Bill 231245 takes effect January 1st, 2024. It changes, we've always had campaign finance. We followed the state processes. But this changes the state process. It limits campaign contributions to $400 from any one person or political party and to $4,000 for any small donor committee. And that's per election. Then it also changes the reporting requirements. I know you've all been through this process, and if you remember, there were three, there were two dates before the election, one after. There is an added date before the election, and it's kind of a different timeframe. And then beside that, it also requires the city clerk's office to keep records a little bit longer, which is probably a good thing. As a home rule municipality, we have options. We can operate under the existing statutes. We can set our own policies and procedures, or we can opt to have no requirements at all. And it's important to note also that our current, the current process has complaints regarding if somebody thinks somebody didn't file a report correctly, the complaint would come to the city clerk's office. We would, of course, follow state requirements. But Colorado Municipally is suggesting that we set formal processes. And so we are asking for some direction on how council would like to proceed.
I think compliance with state statute, voluntarily complying with it, is probably a really good idea.
That's interesting, because the take on CML seems to be that legislation was passed that says, hey, all you, you all need to do it this way. And we've been doing it one way just fine. And that most home rule cities are talking about exempting themselves from the new law and saying, the way we were doing it was just fine. These are our local elections. The fact that one state legislator got mad at another state legislator over their old elections when they were in city council and created a law, that most cities are saying, we don't want any part of it, unfortunately. Statutory towns won't have that option. So there's, there's a lot of, like, background to this?
Interesting.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's where I said Lisa can give you the facts, and then I can interject opinion. You know, why the state legislature is telling us what our campaign rules should be for your local election. Pardon me, I also tell them that's none of their business. But certainly, another way to do it is, well, they passed a law, so I guess we'll follow it. We don't have to.
The one thing is, we're only adding a report 60 days before the election to the, our process. That's the most substantive change, is the one additional reporting?
No, it's the campaign contribution.
Exactly. I'm saying from a clerk's point of view, yes, the reporting, that having one more recording, required reporting date is, is fairly substantial, getting everyone to comply. We send out a lot of reminders, but I mean, that, that's our job. We would certainly do it. But yes, I think the campaign limits are much different than they were before.
We, I think we're pretty lucky here in Montrose. Our, our campaigns are civil. They're robust. People spend money on some signs. There's a few debates. It's great. I think we have to recognize that there are cities in the state of Colorado where they spend tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars on city council campaigns. And this is the state legislature's solution to limiting that. So we could say, yeah, that works for us. Or we could say, no, we're, we're, we're doing it just fine ourselves. But we have to decide, if we want to do it our own way, we need to decide before the state law goes into effect.
What are our current campaign limits for individuals and parties?
So it's rather complicated, and I would suggest that Mayor Bynum knows it really well. If you get a, a contribution over a certain amount, you file a different form. So it, you can, I think it was unlimited how many small donations you could get. But once you got a large donation, it triggered a different process.
You're, it, it's basically unlimited. So if you want to raise a whole bunch of money to run for Montrose City Council, you absolutely can. I don't really, in our community, I don't see what you would do with all that money. We don't have TV ad buys. We don't hardly have, we have some radio. If you do receive a major, if you do receive a big gift, and I think the limit is a thousand, you have to report it within 24 hours. And, and that's, you know, you report it with some paperwork with the city clerk, and that paperwork is public.
Might, might I interject?
Mm-hmm.
It seems to me that the legislation was adopted to fix a problem that we don't experience in Montrose, to kind of follow up on your comments, Mayor. And so I'm of the philosophy, if it's not broken in our city, let's don't try and fix it.
I agree with Mayor Protem.
Yeah, that, I, I think I would agree with you, too. I just want to make sure that we do recognize the other, the other option is, we really want to make sure that no one comes in here with $50,000 and, and quote-unquote buys their seat on our city council. So I think there's something to be said for that. It just hasn't even ever come up in Montrose. So I don't know. Do you preempt? I'm all against preemptively keeping things from going sideways, but also I'm a weak believer in if it's not broken, don't fix it, so.
My guess, anybody that spends $50,000 to be elected to the Montrose City Council probably will not be elected.
Are you, are you questioning their mental attitude?
I, I think from my standpoint, I don't see a problem with it the way it is. And I think until we get to the point where the city has doubled maybe again its size, then I don't, I don't really see a big problem here at this time.
So you would like to. When you say you don't see a problem, that means we would need to pass an ordinance creating our own rules, so we're not subject to the new state rules.
Right.
Is that what?
Yes.
Yeah. If we're opting out of, if we have the option of opting out of a rule that we don't need to comply with.
Yes. So I think that's where you all can think about if there's details of that. Like you like, you do like one piece of it, but you don't like any of it, or we blanket statement are going to write our own rules. It sounds like the city clerk's office would be happy not to do more paperwork. So maybe that part we can do, and it sounds like the campaign limits, we don't think are a problem. So it sounds like we're going to ask our city attorney to move forward with some work that we, we would see an ordinance that we could vote on that would establish our own rules around campaign finance laws for municipal elections that would preempt the new state law.
Okay.
Local control.
Local control.
And create a, an appeal process.
And create an appeal process, because we do like that, because it allows you, you currently, if someone complains that campaign finance is not being done correctly, that candidate XYZ has never filed any paperwork, there's no process to do anything about that.
So there, there is, but it, it's filed with the city clerk, and then there's supposed to be a hearing. We don't have a formal process.
Okay, so we want to formalize that.
So we would create a formal process first.
Okay, is that the direction you needed for now?
It is for now.
Great.
I imagine we'll run into some questions as we get into the details of it, but we'll be back in front of you with suggestions, and you can tell us if we chose the right path through the weeds or not.
And the reason we have these work sessions is so we can talk about this and think about this. So I think, just like with anything, you, you go home tonight, fellow councilors, and you really start chewing on this idea, and you feel differently, speak up before we're voting on something. Great. Okay. Next, we have general city council discussion. I see that we have people in our audience that must be wanting to talk about something. Is this something, are we talking? No? Just listening to, see how we do our work? Oh, okay. Okay. Is there any general city council discussion?
Uh, yeah, I just was curious as to how we're coming along with that work session where people can come and speak to the council and that sort of stuff. I've had several people ask what's happening, and I'm sitting there going, well, I'm not sure right now. But I would like to have an update so that we know how, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. And the sooner the better, so I don't look any dumber than I am.
No, we were hoping to start, we were hoping, you're right, we were hoping to start in July, and then with our conference and whatnot, we just didn't have enough time to put together the whole process. Staff's been working hard on that, and I believe that on our calendar for our second work session in August, which is the 14th, we are currently looking at having that, that citizen interactive discussion time prior to our regularly scheduled work session. So we would begin that at 9:00 on Monday, the 14th of August.
Okay.
And I think we're fleshing out how, how to engage citizens, what topics, how can we make sure staff know ahead of time what we're going to be talking about, so they bring the best information to the table. So I think we're still working on all that. How do we let the citizens know? How do we say, you know, here's how you submit your questions, so we can answer them? I mean, all of that.
And just to keep myself informed, it'd be nice as soon as that comes out that I can get that information in writing, so I can have it with some of this other stuff, so. Thank you.
And we do have nearly final draft language ready to go on the website, so we'll make sure that someone from the city sends that out to all council members. It can include the links to the website. It'll be the city website, but where people can submit their inquiries to join those citizen interactive sessions. Also, there'll be information about how to submit public comment and other ways if that citizen interactive session isn't what they want to do. And Lisa's been working on that, so we'll make sure you have the links, so it'd be easy for you to forward that on to a citizen. Anything else you want to add, Lisa or Ben, about that?
No, not for me.
Any other council?
Let me stand.
I'll get to stand.
Mayor Bynum and I had the opportunity to go to the livestock auction at the county fair, and it was a great time. It was really nice to represent the city there. The city does not buy livestock there, but we make a donation to the livestock auction, so that we're financially helping out these kids that are doing a great job of showing their animals, and it was just a lot of fun.
It was really great. Yeah, Dave, Dave bought a pig and a cow, so hit him up for some burgers or some bacon. It was really fun. It was fun to see how much pride these.
I don't share bacon.
How much pride these youth have in raising these animals and then presenting them. And they win lots of awards, and they get a lot of money for their, for their animal, but then they also kind of say goodbye to their animals. So I could see it was a very bittersweet day for those youth, but my hat goes off to them. I got a chance to sit with some of our city staff whose kids do this. Becky Scrifney, and, and then John Zarke is, is the uncle to the, to the three girls who all showed their steers in the, in the junior livestock auction, so. And we may have, oh, and Deputy Commander Cox, is that, was that the same Cox family?
Yes, Deputy Chief Cox's daughter. And that's the pig I bought.
Yeah, so I, I, there's probably other city employees whose kids participate, so I don't, maybe tomorrow night, I could be prepared with a better list of all of them to, to, to give them our, our congratulations. Anything else from staff before I go back to Mr. Murphy and Chief Hall? Okay. Chief Hall?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. And then, yeah, we do?
It's your turn.
My turn.
I just wanted to let council know that tomorrow, the Theft Reduction and Prevention Grant opens to the public. It will be an online application, and the public can go to cityofmontrose.org/trap. And then they will be able to go directly to a city webpage where they'll access the grant application. We are, the City of Montrose is offering up to $2,500 of 2A money to businesses who have been victimized in the past by crime and through a Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design survey, which our officers will provide the business upon application. They will be given a list of potential upgrades, identified security measures that they can install under their business to target harden their business against crime. And so a business can apply for up to $2,500. However, if a business would like to add another $2,500 of their own funds, then the city would then match that $2,500 with another $2,500. So in a situation like that, the business would, would offer $2,500, and the city would be offering a total of $5,000 for about $7,500 worth of, $7,500 worth of security improvements. So I think it's a great program. I expect to receive a bunch of applications. We have a TRAP Grant Committee that will be meeting to go over all the applications and then make our decision, hopefully in the coming months, and notify those businesses.
So it's not a rolling application. It's a, here's the deadline, then we'll renew them all, and then we'll award them?
Correct. So the application is open for the month of August, and then we'll close August 31st. And then we will convene as a committee and make the decision based on the data that's presented.
And then will you evaluate doing it again each year, if it's successful and it works well?
We will, as long as we have the budget capacity to continue the program. I think it's, I think it's going to be fantastic, and we will make this a yearly offering.
Great.
Well, Chief, could you continue it? Once we get this done, this helps out your workload also, if we can reduce.
I agree. Yep, absolutely. It's going to help us identify some of these criminals that are victimizing these businesses and then possibly make them think twice before they commit a crime at one of these businesses, so it'd be good.
And Chief, could you tell us a little bit about tomorrow night, Police Night Out?
Absolutely. So tomorrow night is the National Night Out. It's an opportunity for neighbors to get together in their own community. But if they want to come down to the Montrose Police Department, and Centennial Plaza will be serving hot dogs to the public, and we'll have a plethora of different law enforcement agencies together tomorrow night to, you know, meet our citizens and just get together and talk about any crime issues that they may be experiencing. And so that's tomorrow from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And it's just about the right time, maybe to stop by first, have a council meeting, and then maybe finish with coming back by.
I do think, I thank all of council, well, I can't speak for everybody, but I know we all have it on our calendar, and everyone was super glad you moved it to 5:00 from 6:00, so we could go before council.
Absolutely.
We may see many councilors there.
Hopefully, it's cooler than it has been, but we'll see.
It's supposed to be a little cooler.
And it's nice to have you cooking us dinner tomorrow.
Yeah.
Anything else before we go back to Mr. Murphy for a quick update on 6,700 road construction that I asked for?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So bigger picture, we are planning, I think it's next work session, about a half hour, where Jim and I will give an update on all the capital products for this year, but 6,700 is a little more timely, so I'll hit on that one. But yeah, we'll give an update on kind of, yeah, through, essentially through the end of the year, what everyone can expect. But 6,700 right now, if you remember, the product had kind of three major components. The central portion through the middle, which was pretty easy greenfield construction. We did some utility relocations up at Miami. And then once, the, once we were able to get done with the work at Niagara and Hillcrest, where we had to do that emergency storm repair over there, and that was reopened, we were then able to go to 6,700 in Sunnyside. So they've been there for about the past two months. A lot of utility relocation work. There's over, I think, several miles of trenches that have gone in to essentially get everything done within that quadrant, so in the future, when a roundabout does come in, there's not stuff in the way. So it's a little bit of investment in time now to make that product. So it's a little bit of investment in time now to make that product a lot easier in the future. But even independent of the roundabout, we didn't want new paved road and have a bunch of AC waterline and things under that, so replacing all AC waterline, getting all the overhead undergrounded and out of the way. That is, so they're pushing right now, they're just about done, they're starting to fill and rebase the area. It is scheduled to pave the 9th through the 11th, because we're trying to have it open by the time school starts. You can imagine that detour would not be fun with two schools right there. The Pope John Paul School, I think, starts later, but as, as we understand, at Colorado West Christian School, which is just to the west there, does start the same as the school district, which is the 14th. School starts a little earlier this year. So there will be some work taking place along the shoulders. There may be a power pole in the middle of one of the turn lanes, but it's a future turn lane. So it'll still be fully functional while we wait on, because those things, you have to get the, all the new infrastructure in place, and then the power company has to drop everything off the poles, and the comm company has to come in and drop everything off the poles. So it's all right in order, and if, if any of them get busy elsewhere, you know, it gets delayed. So we have contingency plans in order to get it open, even if we're still waiting on some of that work to take place on the shoulders, so.
So once again, the comm company is making your life so easy.
They've been responsive. DMA has been exceptional. They've, they've really, I mean, there's a lot of work to take place, and then Charter as well. So this one, it's, it's not CenturyLink this time, it's, it's Charter. Charter and DMA are the two major utility companies that are getting relocated. And I'd say they've both been extremely responsive. There's just a lot of work and a really tight place to do it. And so, yeah, I don't get to blame anybody this time, it's, it just takes a while. Nobody arm wrestling on the comm boxes, yeah.
Can't you just tag a stop sign on that pole that's in the way, and they'll think it belongs there?
There you go.
I can attest to the fact that they're working pretty hard. They were actually there on Saturday working. I was sitting there thinking, as I was driving down the Sunnyside, uh-oh, somebody's messing with one of those track hoes, but as I went over there and investigated, it was a crew working. So they are working diligently to get that area fixed up, because it was right on the corner of, of 67 and Sunnyside that they were working.
Both of us can see the construction, so it's kind of fun watching the progress.
Thanks for that update. We look forward to a full, comprehensive update on all the capital projects for the next work session. That'll be great. Okay, I don't think there's anything else for the work session, so we are going to end the work session. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're gonna.
Mayor Bynum, may I ask for 10? I left this stuff for the executive session in my office, and I have to run two blocks that way.
Sure. We will take a 10-minute break before the executive session, but then let's get going promptly, so we can get into it.
Sure.
If you are, don't know about the executive session, that means you are not on the invite list, so thank you so much for coming to work session.